Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for March tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Can I have a roll call, please?
Here, here, here.
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 Here. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay. All right, the next item is comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening either.
Okay. Folks must be at a particular game. Otherwise, I'm sure they would be here commenting.
They're at a basketball game.
All right. So the next item is items for information. The first item is the two thousand and twenty five, twenty six, and twenty twenty six, twenty seven school calendars.
I have Mr. Mike Jacobson from our communications office answer any questions in the memo on the school calendars.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here tonight. So I'm here to present the twenty five, twenty six district calendar as well as the two thousand and twenty six, twenty seven draft district calendar for approval. And if you haven't met me before, so I'm the Assistant Director of the Communications Department. I think I was here about a year ago, so it's always good to see friendly faces once again. So I want to start by thanking the Calendar Committee for their dedication to help formulate these calendars. The committee is made up of administrators, faculty, staff, along with representation from District sixty five, ensuring a broad range of perspectives and aligning the calendar with the best interests of the school community. So a little background on the calendar. So all public school districts must develop a public school calendar with at least one hundred and eighty five days, including a minimum of one hundred and seventy six student attendance days. And E T H S plans its school calendar two years in advance to support students, staff, and families. And throughout each school year, the Calendar Committee finalizes the calendar for the next school year, which would be twenty five, twenty six, and the following year calendar, which would be two thousand and twenty six and two thousand and twenty seven. So the draft in front of you provides families with early notice of key dates and may be revised as needed. So as always, this is probably the most important part, what the committee prioritizes. Number one, starting as late in August as possible, ending semester one before winter break, balancing instructional days between semesters, and aligning with District sixty five as much as possible, including breaks. So aligning with District sixty five helps families reduce stress, you know, reduces childcare conflicts and supports collaboration. All right, so a few key highlights of the calendars. The twenty five, twenty six calendar in front of you remains unchanged from the version that you approved last year. So as for the two thousand and twenty six, twenty seven calendar, the proposed start date, August seventeenth, is later than in recent years and better aligns with District sixty five. This also ensures adequate time for summer programming and facility maintenance. A staff institute day has been added at the start of semester two for the twenty six, twenty seven calendar, giving teachers and staff dedicated time to prepare, review materials, plan for the second half of the year, and basically take a deep breath before the second semester begins. So this helps ensure a smooth transition for students and for staff. So those are the major items that I want to highlight, and so I now open up for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Board, any questions? Leah.
Really just a comment. I like the things that you held up, that you've made as priorities with the calendar. But I thought that I particularly just wanted to say that the idea of having a day after winter break for the staff, the teachers, it seems like a really, it's very positive. I mean, we want to have our students have a real break, and this also enables our teachers, our staff, to have a real break.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Monique? And you did say that the committee is District sixty five and two oh two.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Melissa Messinger from District sixty five is a part of our committee.
Okay.
And we also work with her for their calendar committee as well.
All right, okay, that's good. That's important.
Yeah.
All right. So there are no questions, so thank you so much for coming.
Great, thank you so much.
And sharing that with us. Okay, our next item is international travel for twenty five, twenty six.
Dr. Kiwanis Brown. Tonight is Kiwanis' night here at the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, I am here to propose international travel for July first, two thousand and twenty five, to June thirty, two thousand and twenty six for approval. There is five total trips, one to Namibia, Africa, one to Japan, one to Germany, one to France, and then one to China and Shanghai. Fundraising considerations, word donations, T-shirt sales, a variety of restaurant fundraisers where they receive a percentage of the sales, cultural performances and profits from those, as well as grants in order to supplant the needs of students who are not able to pay for travel. And any questions?
Questions, Board? Pat?
I don't have a question, but that is amazing. When I read that we were taking kids to Africa, I literally, I was, I got chills. I mean, that's amazing. Like, I went to school a thousand years ago, but we didn't go anywhere. We were lucky to get a bus to go three hours, so, you know, and we didn't go to really, and I just applaud you for doing all this work to give these opportunities to kids and do it in such an equitable way so that, I think it was the Africa trip that if you don't have the money, the whole trip gets canceled. So it's not like just some get to go. I think that's so important. So just thank you for your amazing work. That's awesome.
I just wanted to also say that I was like super excited reading this memo, and I think it's great that our students are having this opportunity and that we're enough post-COVID where these trips are happening again, and I think they're so valuable. And like Pat said, it's really good to see the thought in making sure that the participation and the financing of it are equitable.
Yeah, I too was excited to see the fundraising efforts and how you just make sure, the department makes sure that everybody who wants to go is able to go.
Yeah.
So that's really good. And I do remember the days during COVID when we were unable to do this and how hard it was and complicated. So it's really refreshing that now we can just do it.
Okay.
I do want to just highlight for the Board that there could be one more trip to China that we bring to you in April through the Travel Club, which, you know, we didn't, we're working with our partners in China and waiting for them to give us some information, but that could be forthcoming.
That's good. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll just stay here because.
You can just stay here. All right, so we're at the Literacy and Numeracy Report, and you will be joined by Dr. Beavis.
Dr. Beavis and Jake Mills.
Jake Mills.
And for the Board that doesn't know Jake Mills, he's serving as our interim Math Department Chair for the school year.
Welcome.
Welcome, Jake.
We'll get started in just a second, I'm getting.
Okay.
All right, and away we go. So welcome to the Literacy and Numeracy Update. This is an annual update to the Board. Last year was the first year we included numeracy, and we felt it went so well, we're going to include it every year. First off, this is all about district goal one, equitable and excellent education. And I've added that literacy and numeracy are central to providing our students with an equitable and excellent education. It really is at the forefront of our equity work, and that's why it's in italics up there. Tonight, we'll talk about how we're doing. We'll look at several assessments as measures. We'll look at star reading, PSAT eight nine, PSAT ten, and SAT. Those three assessments, the PSAT, SAT suite of assessments are sunsetting, and next year, we'll start to rebuild our dataset using the ACT suite of assessments, which we will start giving next month.
All right, so this graph is a picture of our grade nine star reading proficiency for our incoming freshmen. So at the beginning of this year, as every year, we give the universal star screener to all of our students, grades nine through twelve. But we wanted to highlight the one thing that we noted for this year with our incoming freshman group was that they overall were performing higher than they had in the last three years. So that was actually a good thing to note. But in particular, our Brown students had increased by about ten percent incoming, and our Black students about five percent. So it was great to see that increase in their instructional reading level, which is pretty much their instructional level where they may need a little bit of guidance. But they're doing pretty well in regards to vocabulary and comprehension. So with a little support, they are accessing text and material. So it was great to see that increase coming in. And then our literacy lab, we continue to offer support in our literacy lab, and we increase each year. As of right now, twenty four, twenty five school year, we have about sixty four students, but we anticipate roughly about five to seven more, if we're looking at trend, before the end of this year. So we're definitely seeing growth in numbers in our literacy lab and being able to offer that support. One thing I would love to highlight is student quotes, which is one student, and this was kind of something that we saw in multiple, multiple areas of feedback from students who said that the Lit Lab helped them actually like reading now. It also helps them to support them in areas that they are weak in. And that's the premise of the work in the Lit Lab. And so it was great to see that students are actually feeling supported and are growing in areas that they feel like they are not as strong in. And then just a little information about the lab is, again, is referral based. So anybody in the building can refer a student to the Lit Lab if they are noticing that they are in need of any additional support in literacy. And we've also added a numeracy component in the Lit Lab for this year, and we're adding more support in numeracy for next year. And so it's important to also note that when we talk about numeracy, it's also a form of literacy. So students have to have literacy in mathematics in order to be successful. It's not just about reading a book, it's also about being able to answer math problems and to determine what math really means. That's also a form of literacy. And so we do this by collecting different types of diagnostic assessment data, running records through the lessons that they're received in the Lit Lab, and also evaluations of their current skills in reading, writing, comprehension, and vocabulary, and math skills. And then Summer Lift, the Great Summer Lift. This summer, this last summer, twenty three, twenty four school year, we had about twenty eight students. We did not, we did not have the donations from our donor. He was not able to supply that anymore, and so we got some funds from District sixty five who are not able to give us any funds for next summer. So we're not offering Summer Lift for this upcoming summer because we don't have the funds to support it. But we were able to run it last year, and so we were really grateful to have the twenty eight students that we had there because that's the funding that we were allowed. So when you see that the numbers have decreased, it's not because we didn't have the students who needed to be in there, we just didn't have the funding to support all the students who needed to have the support. And then their overall growth was about one year. There was one particular student who read about sixteen books, and it's a fifteen day program. So this student was just adamant about reading and really grew to love reading over the course of the summer and really like developed their interest in specific genres, where they learned what their favorite genre was during the time they were in this course. So that was really awesome to know. But again, about one year growth from the students during the course of last summer. And then the awesome, fantastic work of our school-wide reading specialist, Ms. Bramley. We have several community events, the E-Town Community Literacy Fest that's typically held in September, outside on the courtyards, Family Literacy Night, that's in April, so that's coming up. If you're available, come through. And then E T H S Black History Month pop-ups, they offer two of those, where in all these events, we offer free books, and these books are typically donated by various organizations that Liz Bramley solicits free books from, and they give us lots of them, so that's awesome. And then internal events, Liz Bramley does a lit monthly e-newsletter that offers literacy instructional practices that teachers can use. It offers different books that they can use, and then some examples of lessons that they can do with these. The E T H S All Staff Book Swap, which we offer right before winter break, as well as, again, at the end of the year. And this is where all staff in the building, from custodians to the superintendent, can come and bring a book and pick up a book. And if they don't have a book to bring, they can come and get one for free. So that's for staff, just to encourage the love of literacy and to demonstrate to all of our students that literacy is important, no matter what area in life you are, from students to superintendent. Literacy Crash Course, that's something that we're starting to offer because there is a gap for our staff who want to be able to support students in literacy but don't necessarily know how and can't afford or don't have the time to take courses in official college. So we're offering a literacy crash course that'll be offered Wednesdays for eight weeks. So we're doing eight weeks, eight-week increments of this twice a year to support teachers in developing their literacy toolbox, I guess you can say, and foundational knowledge so that they can support our students to help them become stronger in classes. And then Chicago-area literacy leaders, we held, we actually hosted that this year. It was really great. We had about fifty five participants from surrounding Chicago-area schools, where our own Janay McAlpin, Tony, keynoted for us, and then we offer workshops in literacy for those teachers. And then the freshman book is the thing that we offer every year for all of our incoming freshmen. They all read one book, and then there's a lesson that's devised for them to work through just to support them in discussing the book. So future plans is a literacy event, Student Planning Committee. Liz Bramley is working to form this committee with students and also expanding community collaborations as well as doing more promotion to do more with the freshman book.
All right. So we have numeracy. You'll see our district definition for numeracy up there, the ability to understand, reason with, and apply simple numerical concepts. Numeracy means being able to understand how math is used in the real world and being able to apply it to decision-making. And numeracy skills are the vocabulary and tools of mathematics, communicating mathematics, quantitative and abstract reasoning, structure justification, patterns recognition, fundamental arithmetic questions, number sense, operation sense, computation, measurement, geometry, probability, data, and statistics. It's significant that we name these and that we are very intentional about how we build numeracy through the acquisition of the numeracy skills. And you're going to see in the highlights from the report tonight, both the success and the challenges we've had in that area. First off, you see numeracy growth on the PSAT to PSAT ten. So PSAT eight nine is given in the spring of ninth grade, and then PSAT ten is given the following spring. So this is cohorted data. You'll see that your expected growth is twelve points between those two assessments, and you'll see that every student group that we were able to collect data on, that had more than twenty students, showed growth, and the percentage growth is on the right, that percentage growth calculation. And you'll see that we had a six point five percent increase in Hispanic-Latino mathematics achievement as measured by the PSAT eight nine to the PSAT ten in math. So we're talking about numeracy skills when we talk about standardized assessment. So it's just one way to look at it. But overall, the story is students continue to grow. Here we see what is considered, this is from the College Board, this is the growth area. This is where you grow. This shows you how we're doing growth-wise. We're in the green, which means our students grow, and you'll notice that our students grow the most between tenth and eleventh grade. Between spring of tenth grade and spring of eleventh grade, they grow the most. Last year, this includes the students who actually took AP pre-calculus. So we think that may have had some effect there in terms of that growth. There was more growth that year than in previous years. It's a hypothesis, we can't really prove it yet, but we'll look into it. But it's definitely a positive development. Now we see numeracy attainment by SAT benchmark. And what we did in blue, we have the two thousand and twenty three cohort, and in red, the two thousand and twenty four. So that's spring, this is our students who took the SAT in the spring in two thousand and twenty three compared to students who took the SAT in two thousand and twenty four. And you'll see that overall, we grew. Almost half of our students meant the benchmark. We see that Asian students marginally decreased from seventy one to seventy percent. Black students increased from thirteen percent to seventeen percent, meaning the benchmark. Hispanic students went from nineteen percent to twenty eight percent. On the chart, that's a pretty significant jump, actually. So that's worthy of study and really to think about. What did we do? And we have done some very targeted things. Our GANOS program is one of the things that we've done. So that's a part of that data, students who took that. Two or more, students two or more races, this is a very fluid and dynamic group, it's self-reported on the SAT. So you see one from sixty three to sixty, and you'll see that white students increased from sixty seven percent, meaning the benchmark, to seventy one percent. There is lots of work to be done here, but it is trending overall in a positive direction for our student groups. And next is, I'm going to turn it over to Jake Mills. This section of the presentation is called Meeting the Demand: Increased Pre-Algebra and Algebra Enrollment. And I want to preface this by saying, there was a time when we had four teachers teaching algebra and pre-algebra, and they could literally go across the hall and collaborate, or they could collaborate over lunch. And now we are at fourteen teachers, a third of our math department, teaching algebra and pre-algebra. And that has ramifications. I'm going to turn it over to Jake. He's our interim Math Department Chair, and previously, an Algebra One teacher, as well as a stats teacher and everything in between. So Jake, it's your show.
Thank you, Pete. Just a couple of things to highlight here. As a former Algebra One teacher and now the interim Math Department Chair, we had a dedicated numeracy interventionist this year at a point two release who focused on our Algebra One students and our pre-algebra students in the literacy lab. We saw a lot of success from the students that were working with that interventionist. The number of failing grades decreased in both pre-algebra and Algebra One. The Algebra One class is team taught by two math teachers in all of our sections. But we still see that we need to focus on numeracy, foundational algebra, and arithmetic operations. So I have assembled a working group of instructional coaches and Algebra One teachers, geometry teachers, and pre-algebra teachers. And we'll be doing an audit of some of our classrooms in Algebra One and pre-algebra through student surveys. through student surveys, collaboration with the instructional coaches, teacher surveys, department chair observations. We hope to, you know, have consistency across the curriculum. One thing that Dr. Beavis mentioned is we used to have three or four teachers that taught pre-algebra or Algebra One. Now it's a team of nearly a third of the department. So finding dedicated time for these teachers to collaborate can be difficult. And so one of the things that I've tried to focus on is giving them that time and figuring out what we need to focus on first. And so I'm hoping that the audit will give us a clearer picture into the challenges that we face in the department. Another thing I wanted to mention, Pete mentioned our AP pre-calc class. I think the the story is students are growing here at ETHS. We have a lot of students that are starting in Algebra One, but we had the largest AP pre-calc enrollment in the world. And seventy percent of our students passed that exam, got a three or higher. So it just shows how hard the members of the math department are working from where students come in and then where they finish in AP pre-calculus or above. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Beavis.
So we see a variety of numeracy interventions and supports that that Jake has has mentioned. We see small class sizes. We see multiple teachers. We've grown that. Pride ourselves in individual instruction, curriculum alignment to standards. I want to talk about our broadened articulation with District sixty-five briefly. Jake has the unique position of both being a participating in articulation work with District sixty-five as an Algebra One teacher, but also in the role of being the interim math department chair of actually going in in that role and continuing to work with District sixty-five teachers. And one of the things that's significant is that District sixty-five is going to a full standards-based assessment for math next year for algebra. And Jake has some, what has come out of that in terms of your articulation work?
The last two years, when I worked with them as a teacher, an Algebra One teacher, we focused on writing the assessments. So what are the the learning targets that we want to see in the Algebra One student coming out of eighth grade? And so we identified the learning standards critical for Algebra One and then wrote the assessments. Most recently, I went down there about a month ago. We looked at what does it mean to meet expectations on these assessments? And so I think it was helpful to have someone from ETHS meeting with the middle school teachers and also middle school administrators to determine what the bar is for meeting expectations and what we want to see out of our students when they get here to ETHS. So we've had some great discussions back and forth about spiraling content. As as we've returned to semester exams, we want to make sure that students are ready for those when they get to the high school as well. So a lot has come out of those conversations and we'll continue to articulate with them going forward.
Thank you, Jake. We also have a math department support duty this year. Our focus was on one algebra. And next year, we're looking to expand that and continue that focus on one algebra. Beyond the traditional numeracy pathway, Jake has has done a lot of work this year with data science, early college, AP comp sign, transdisciplinary courses. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I'll just touch on our data science class. We currently have three sections of data science. Next year, we'll have six sections of data science. Recently, about two weeks ago, myself and the data science team presented at a conference in San Antonio, Texas on the development of our course, what we do and sharing out some student experiences and project that the students have done there with researchers and professors from around the country, around the world, actually. Connected with some people in New Zealand while we were there, and they were really intrigued by our work. So the data science team is doing great things. The enrollment in that class has really exploded, along with AP statistics. And so more and more students interested in math at a college level.
Jake is being very humble. One of the things that came out of the data science, I'm going to brag for you and your data science team. This is a national conference on data science in high school, right? And some of the the architects of data science at the university level, folks who are really involved in this and involved in the pedagogy, were very impressed at the ETHS team that presented on using local data. Locally sourced data in Evanston as part of their data science course, as part of the experience that our students have. And that's an extraordinarily unique experience. And very, and it was so unique, in fact, that the folks who were in the room, academics in the room, the folks in in higher ed were very intrigued and asked a series of questions about, wow, how do you do that? That's pretty amazing. But that's really what Evanston math should really be about, right? Locally sourced use of of mathematics. And that's where we get to that definition of numeracy that I started with. So it comes, so it really does inform the work and it really is unique. And there's a reason why that's grown over over the years and is doubling for next school year. So now it's up to questions. We're at the question portion.
Thank you. Boyd, questions?
Excuse me. We can go back to the literacy piece. There's a, I'm scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. In the lift section, which I know we're not doing anymore because there's no money out of sixty-five, which, so it was sort of sad to even see it included, I feel like. But what's interesting in the slideshow is that the, there are two slides related to lift. Maybe you could
I'll pull them up.
Pull those up. First one shows the population served, I think. It's called population. And then the second one says average growth. Very helpful slide. But since we don't have lift anymore, let's now scroll back to Lit Lab enrollment. See how we have this slide that shows numbers of people? This is a pet peeve of mine, where we talk about things we're doing, but we don't show what it's achieving. I'm glad we're doing it. Literacy Lab sounds great. Love the testimonials, all excellent. But we need the slide, like the second slide in the lift presentation that shows out of the, out of the fifty-six one year, sixty-two one year and sixty-four, which one of those started here and went to there as a result of, or potentially as a result. I'm not sure if we can show the actual connection, right? But I I I just feel like that's the missing piece with this kind of reporting out where we're just, we're talking about, so often we're talking about all these really, really good programs. No question, all sound really exciting and interesting, but I just, I want to know what what it's producing. I mean, I know our students are human, so I don't want to make it sound like we're just
You're looking at the impact, right?
Readers, you know, in that way.
Yeah, and a lot of the goal for Summer Lift was to support, initially it was to support our students. And as we expanded to District sixty-five, we noticed that majority of the students enrolled in Summer Lift were D sixty-five students. So we were talking about kids, grades two through pretty much five. So we haven't seen the impact because they're not here yet. But that was the hope, if we were to continue Summer Lift, was to see that impact when they came. And not to, you know, put anybody out of a job, but to see the numbers in the Lit Lab decrease because we wanted to be able to service them when they were younger, so that the impact would be shown when they got to the high school. But unfortunately, no money, no dinero.
That's helpful to me because I didn't understand that before you explained that. Other questions? Pat?
Thank you. So I was also really interested in Summer Lift because long ago I did a lot of work on bridge programs. And from the data that I saw back then, it was a very successful way to get kids ready. And that their second to fifth grade, I didn't even, that didn't beam into me. So that's even more amazing. So two questions. One, I, this might be hard to answer, so if you can, don't even want to try, I understand. But what is kind of the universe of kids that would be eligible or good fit for the lift program?
So we were looking for students who were anywhere between two and two and more grades behind, grade levels behind in reading. So if they demonstrated on the map test that they were at least two or more grade levels behind, then those were students that we considered to be prime candidates. Because even with a little bit of intensive instruction, you can still see growth. And that's why, if you remember, maybe three years back, we were seeing two, three-plus years of growth because we were really focused on those students who had two or more years of of grade deficiencies in reading. As we started to kind of advance post-COVID, we were getting more of the students who were between two to three years. So there wasn't as much growth. And then there was a high number of absences because there were still COVID-related illnesses. So students were missing a lot of days in those last couple of years. So the growth declined. But we also saw that the students who were coming were not as in much, as much need as we saw in the beginning of the program.
Okay. So in theory, if the program were to continue, if you're working with students as young as second grade, in theory, they could come every summer until they came to ETHS?
They could.
That's a lot, but
Yeah, we had a lot of repeat students. And also, the great thing about what we were doing too is we collaborated with NEIU. And so I also signed up to do our clinic practicum. So students and, or teachers at ETHS who are part of the NEIU program, as well as in the surrounding area, like D sixty-five teachers, were part of this program. And when they did their clinic practicum here in the fall with me as their instructor, we would use D sixty-five and ETHS students in the program. So they could not only get support in the summer, but they could also continue in the fall to get the support. And so we saw students who were continuing to come into the program. And that has also declined. So we won't have that next fall. We had it this last fall, but we won't have it next fall. So that's just the unfortunate, you know, part of it. But a lot of those students who were growing incrementally were students who were part of the program, both in the summer and then coming back in the fall. So they had lots of opportunity to get additional support.
So we need to find someone to get you some money. I mean, this, in all seriousness, this sounds like a really amazing opportunity. And, you know, people raise concerns about our relationship and are we supporting sixty-five and supporting each other? This is like a crown jewel example. So, okay. We need more money.
This is our call.
No, no, I know you do. I know you do. I know. And it can't all come from our operating budget, I understand. But yeah, that seems like a program worth raising money for.
Maybe being creative to try to figure out how we can, how we can do this. Because we do want to support students from District sixty-five who are struggling.
Because they're all our students.
They're our students.
They eventually come here and they're all our kids.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with you. I I hope someday we don't need a Lit Lab. But we have needed a Lit Lab. I'm glad we have. We have the resources. I've been there. It's really a great space. So if there's something that we can do to help these students before they come, that would be great.
Great. Well, thank you for your awesome work.
Thank you.
Let's get you some money. I had two comments, and one is actually related to what Pat just said, which is, I've been really pleased to see that when we listen today to the collaboration between math, for math, between District sixty-five and our district. And we've also recently had presentations about what's happening with the dual-language program and multilingual services. And I just wanted to lift that up because, I mean, that seems like a direction we want to continue to go. And those things are both very, very positive and good to see. And the other thing I wanted to note was that I think it's really interesting and great that the numeracy interventionist is in the literacy lab. Because it seems to demonstrate that numeracy is a type of literacy. And I noticed that you made a comment about making sure that literacy instruction is integrated into the math curriculum. And I think that's always sometimes been sort of forgotten about in general, not here, I mean, just in in the world. So that seems like pretty forward-thinking, and I just wanted to lift that up as well.
Yeah, I just wanted, that was very intentional. I thought that it was critical because I always want to enforce the fact that everybody's a reading teacher. And reading does not always mean books. It it literacy happens in many forms, in the arts, in math, in the sciences. It's everywhere. It's in everything that we do. And so that placement with the the math interventionist in the Lit Lab was very intentional. So thank you for that comment.
Liz?
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to just comment on Summer Lift. My kids participated in it a few years ago, two or three, maybe. And they thought it was really cool, you know, they're very food motivated, there's snacks at Summer Lift. Being in the high school, very exciting. Like, they were just so much more responsive to it than when they had had interventions at their, or their home elementary school. And they both came out of it, you know, reading really well. So I just wanted to say I also love Summer Lift. But I have a numeracy question. It's kind of a dreaded question, but I'm thinking about, we're about five years out from the beginning of the pandemic now. And I know it was around then that District sixty-five changed their math approach. So how are things looking as compared to before the pandemic?
Well, if you go back really before the pandemic, we had four algebra, not, we had four algebra teachers, now we have fourteen. What we really have is we've seen a greater need, we were just talking about this, actually, Jake and I, and we talk about this a lot, actually. Because we're seeing more students in, placing into algebra and geometry, I mean, algebra and pre-algebra, right? After they've taken, ostensibly taken algebra in eighth grade, we're really looking at what are the, what are the numeracy skills that students are struggling with? It's not necessarily algebraic skills. It's it's very foundational math, which we can see if we look at the pandemic, that shifted, the years that were remote as students come in have shifted. So it means one thing if during the pandemic, you missed eighth grade or you missed seventh grade math. It's another thing to say you missed third grade and fourth grade, where a lot of the numeracy skills are established and built upon. So we're seeing, one of the things we could hypothesize is that we're seeing more students in placing into algebra and pre-algebra because of that and because the need to to work with students and meet students where they are. And oftentimes, we find that it is with number sense and operation sense and computation. Is there anything you'd like to add, Jake?
No, it's a great question. When I was in the classroom, we'd always, you know, backdate. So if they were, you know, COVID was four years ago, what was covered in that grade? And then if they didn't get caught up on it, what do we need to catch up on when they get to high school? And so as math teachers, we were just, you know, informally doing that that work to go back and figure out what grade they missed. I think the further we get away from COVID, it's second or third grade skills. But we're still seeing number sense difficulties for some of those students that are taking pre-algebra and Algebra One.
Yeah, that sounds great. I mean, that sounds exactly right, like what you would need to do as far as backtracking. Where did they miss this foundational math, you know? So I'm, it's good. We're keeping track of that and it sounds great. Thanks.
It's still a challenge, though, because you've got like, what'd you say? You said fourteen teachers. Is that fourteen sections?
Go ahead, Jake.
We have fourteen teachers that teach pre-algebra or Algebra One.
And then they're team teaching, right?
Yeah, so it's fourteen sections of Algebra One. And then six sections of pre-algebra this year. So some teachers teach pre-algebra and Algebra One. So yeah, about a third of the department is teaching one of the two or both currently right now.
That's a lot. That's a lot of catch-up because many of these kids had algebra, right, as eighth, in eighth grade.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the, one thing that's that's come out of it, though, is it's been a team effort. So since we've had to bring more people onto the team, this has been a conversation among the lunch table in the math department. You know, how do we get these students caught up from where they were? And we're talking a lot more about Algebra One and pre-algebra at the lunch table rather than geometry, like we used to in the past. So trying to spread the work among a lot more people on the team in the math department.
And that means we have to be more, when it was for folks, again, it was more informal. But, you know, one of the things is that Jake, doing this in response to when the, when the algebra teachers came forward and said, hey, we need to get on the same page. We're we're seeing this in a larger scale, that Jake has has created and developed this working group in collaboration with his teachers. And again, that's like class audits. That means classroom observation, seeing what's going, and not evaluating the teacher, but evaluating the mathematical experience, right? Looking specifically for literacy integration. And then working with teachers to make sure that our curriculum, our algebra curriculum, is responsive to the students in front. And that they have a common, not not a, not a lockstep curriculum, but that there are guaranteed experiences within that curriculum and standards that everyone collaborates and we work towards with our kids. And we also want to make them a space of joy. I mean, it's difficult when kids have to repeat a grade their first year. And they have to repeat a class their first year. So we're very conscious, we're having a conversation about that, too. And that's why we have things like algebra and entrepreneurship and algebra and coding and just looking for opportunities to make that experience new and fresh and be able to celebrate the learning that's occurring. And really, as Jake was saying earlier, be able to celebrate the learning that's occurring. And really, as Jake was saying earlier, really having that, to, to bring kids in, you need to celebrate where they are and their small successes to build that mathematical confidence that has eroded over, over fifteen, over, I don't know, how many years is that? When you get to high school, like eight years, nine years, right? Where you've been told essentially, a lot of kids internalize this, right? They internalize, I'm no good at math. I'm not a math student. And if you think about what we want our math students to be, we want them to have this numeracy, right, the ability to understand reason and apply simple numerical concepts, being able to understand how math is used. We want them to be citizens of, of the world that are fluent in those things, so that they can take things like data science and that, you know, in the world that they're going to encounter, really requires that they be, they have a level of fluency with, with numeracy and numeracy skills. So really, finding joy in those spaces is important, too.
Very much so. Other questions? Something that we want to keep track of for sure. So thank you much for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got any information for us? You got any information for us?
Yes, I do. Right now, the game is tied fifteen, fifteen.
Okay.
E T H S was down eleven, five, and now the game is tied at fifteen.
Okay. We're gonna do our data quarterly update.
Yes, and we're gonna have Dr. L., Dr. Murphy, so, Dr. Carrie Levy, and Amy Verberk to come with our quarterly update. Everybody else is at the game.
Don't rub it in.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, we'll make it quick, because I know we want to see how the game's going. Okay, I'm just gonna drive. I've been here a couple times to show the dashboard to you. So now we have third quarter data up. So I'm just gonna go through, explain it, and just elaborate on a couple of areas. So this is straight from our website. You can find it from my research, go down to data dashboard, and then this is what you see. So we've got this homepage for this year with our first quarter, second quarter, third quarter. You can click on Academic Support tab. This is third quarter data. Kiwan and just talked about, like, the sixty-four and the Lit Lab attendance. So this is third quarter participation with the Academic Studies Center, Homework Center, Lit Lab, Wildkid Academy. And then, as you go down, you can see we broke out the Academic Studies Centers by student demographic and grade. We break out the Homework Center, the same by student demographics and grade, and then Wildkid Academy. Lit Lab is too small to disaggregate in this way. So that's, sorry to be so fast. That's academic supports. And you can go for the drop-down to the top. So if I go to attendance, and I can drop down to third quarter. So attendance and discipline, we're reporting cumulative. So a note about attendance, for chronic absentee, at the end of the year, the state considers students with eighteen absences excused and unexcused as chronically absent. And the state considers students with nine or more unexcused absence as chronic truant. And so as we've been doing, collecting this data and reporting it to you through this dashboard cumulative, we're also been thinking about those, like, kind of inflection points of where we really think students are kind of at risk of being chronically absent or, you know, chronically truant. And so here we are through the third quarter. I'm just gonna back this up for a quick minute before I go ahead. So when we did the second quarter, which was the end of the first semester, we had a halfway point. So we said nine or more absences excused, unexcused, that's halfway through for chronic absentee. And we said four absences for unexcused. And so we're trying to kind of think about that as we go through and reflect on quarters. So that's where we came up with fourteen more. So next quarter, it's four more absences or unexcused to be considered chronically absent. And next quarter, students with seven or more, just two more unexcused absences, will have them considered as chronic truant. So it's kind of where we've, where we've, why I have these points. If you're, just to explain how it kind of came about, deciding on my team, whether it's fourteen, or thirteen, or seven, or six, like, this seemed to be kind of a fair report and, and comparable to what we did first quarter also. Okay, so that was it. But you can see, so eighty-five percent of our students have less than fourteen, so fifteen percent of our students with fourteen or more absences, and six percent of students with seven or more unexcused. So that is tracking lower than what we ended last year. So, and this is consistent with last semester, so hopefully it'll just kind of keep tracking lower than last semester, which is good. I mean, last year, which is good. And so that fifteen percent of students with fourteen or more absences excused and unexcused is five hundred and eleven students. And so this breaks down those five hundred and eleven students by demographic, the portion of them that have an I E P that are free reduced lunch, and the portion that are emergent multilinguals. It also breaks it down by grade. And then similar for the students, the six percent of students who have seven or more unexcused, that's two hundred and, two hundred and eleven students. So same breakdown by demographics and by grade. Okay, so that's all I wanted to say about the attendance. Discipline is also cumulative. So at this point, at the, near the end of the third quarter, six hundred and fifty-nine students, nineteen percent had one or more discipline incidents. And then those are broken down, of those six hundred and fifty-nine students disaggregated by student demographic and grade. And then I also, we talked about this at the beginning of the year, and so we've been breaking out a little more of all, of those students, all of the actions, it's multiple actions, and how all of the actions for these discipline incidents break down. So for example, over half, fifty-seven percent are conferences. So it's a conference with a dean or a student, whatnot. Four percent are inside suspension, two percent are outside. We have three percent of our alternative to suspensions, five percent are restorative practices. So that's how this is. And then we have detention, social probation, restricted lunch and study, and then just a small portion of other actions. Okay. And then the last section of the dashboard is Student Services. So third quarter, my colleague's here. So, and this is just third quarter data, so this is not cumulative. So this third quarter is the number of universal referrals, three hundred and two students who had universal referral, referrals. And then we're reporting on the number of social work referrals, the number of A I T referrals, and the number of five oh four plan referrals. And then looking at students with an I E P, of those students with an I E P, the portion that have problem solving around at-risk factors. So the definition, it's in small writing, I'll read it. It's I E P problem solving and intervention refers to I E P teams actively problem solving and developing interventions in alignment with the student's I E P to address academic, academic performance, behavioral, and well-being needs. And so that's our, what we've been measuring in that area this year. Okay, so that was just a quick drive for what the updates are for the third quarter. So if anyone has any questions?
Questions, board, Gretchen?
I know we've talked about this before, because you've been, we're now starting to get these updates more regularly, at least I think we've talked about it before. When we see the absences, this is so great to see all this visual. I really appreciate the depiction and how we can access the data and look at it in different ways. But my question is, what does it mean for what we're doing with the data? So when we see these number of students, particularly maybe the ones who have seven or more, but they're not yet at fourteen, or maybe they're approaching seven, who, who says, okay, let's find those kids? Who are they? Who's talking to them to figure out why they're not showing up?
I'll take that.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So we do run a regular attendance report, and oftentimes, those students are referred to our S S T through our grade level teams. And we also, once we have that report, we disaggregate it out. There are oftentimes, we will refer them, depending on the percentages, we'll refer them to the support, student support advocates that we work with, with North Cook, who are housed in our building as well. We have, if they're severely truant, we refer them to Brent Nance, who is the truancy officer. And he will then have those meetings where he meets with, I just actually had a meeting with him, and a teacher, and he'll get a team together, and we'll meet with the parent. Oftentimes, the student will be present, it just depends. And we talk about problem solving, things of that nature, and how we can support the student. That's also where you'll see universal referrals, because then we may say, well, they may need a social work referral. And there are different mitigating factors that we look at, and we look at it holistically. There are some students that have attendance that may not have been reported. So they may not, their parent may not have called it in, and they may have actually been sick. So you have students that fall into those guidelines. But we do, we have attendance groups and social skills groups and things like that. And so we take that data annually, too. And that's kind of how we build out some of our support groups, that our social workers and our mental health professionals will develop groups around that to try our best to attack whatever we can using different tiered interventions. You're welcome.
Anyone else? So I, I like the way you're saying that you use this data to determine next steps for, for students, and the staff is using this. Do they, do they use it from the dashboard, or are they getting it in other ways?
So we always have, Mid, she always runs, we, we put in an attendance report request so that we can then have, and we break it down by grade level, how many absences, N Cs, things like that. So it's a large report that is then disaggregated out, and, and we attack it from that lens. So it's not just the dashboard. The dashboard is where some of that information is housed.
Right.
But we use a bigger report.
Internally, you're getting data more timely and more regular than what we're
Absolutely, real time.
Reporting at the end of a quarter.
Super, great. Well, I really appreciate also seeing this, and, and I, I really like the way we can see it visually and click on it, or hover over, and just get more information and get it all highlighted for us. So I think it's extremely helpful.
Thanks. And, you know, I mean, this is our first year doing it. So as we go through, and then at the end of the summer, when the state gives us the data, and we can reconcile and see, like, how close, especially with, for example, these, this attendance are, like, tracking metrics are to how it ends up, and we'll be able, I may keep it the same next year, or I may make modifications, depends, depends on what we learned at the end of the year from the state data.
Yeah. Right, thank you. Yep. Okay, Dr. Beavis is going up, so we're gonna do our textbook adoption deletion proposals.
And the kits are up twenty-five, twenty-two at the half.
All right, at the half already? It's so quick. No timeouts.
They're moving it along. We're in the lead. And it's halftime.
It's halftime.
So it's time for textbook adoption.
Let's see if we can finish this meeting before the basketball game.
Halftime show. Welcome to textbook adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six. The first thing you'll notice is that here's our trend. We're, we're down to forty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. We didn't have any large textbook adoptions this year. It's not like we had chemistry or biology, which would be a massive outlier. Forty-nine thousand dollars is, is no small number, but it definitely isn't a hundred.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go over what those are in a second, but first, thank you to the teachers who, who, you know, suggest books, department chairs who shepherd them through, Angela Malone and the Book Distribution Center team. They do a phenomenal job securing quotes, ordering books, filling book orders. They work with a variety of folks. They do a heck of a, heck of a great job. Liz Johnson, my secretary, does a phenomenal job every year in helping to quarterback all of the, all the textbook adoption and, and all that work. And finally, Curriculum Forum members, who really get the, the sneak peek on this. They get, they get to see the presentations by the department chairs, and kind of talking through what each book, the importance of each book, and really why we, why we should be adopting them. I will go briefly now to the grid itself. You'll see, here's the grid itself. Make that look bigger for everybody. You'll see that there's a lot of world, it's all world language and multilingual service textbooks. You'll see there's a Latin book, a German book, and then there's some Spanish books. You'll see that there's a dual credit Spanish book, which is A Hundred Years of Solitude. That's what they're gonna do with our dual credit course with Lake Forest. And then you see the multilingual services is this digital print, English three D levels one through four, which also acts as a supplemental for different content areas. So one of the science teachers who was in Curriculum Forum was really excited, and she was like, man, that's great. I can, you know, use that resource. And that's the purpose, right? The purpose is not only to have it there for the students, but also to have it as a resource for our, for our teachers. So we thought that was really great. Questions about textbook adoption?
That's great. Very clear.
Okay. It's an information item tonight, and the next board meeting will be an action item.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'll let Dr. Beavis get back to his chair. And we are at FOIAs.
All right, we have FOIAs. We have, we have three FOIAs, one from Kiswani, one from Gormley, and one from Colsa. And the responses are in your packets.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. All right, we are at Board Committee Reports. Do we have any reports? And Olya and I went to a meeting. I don't know if you want to say anything about that.
I'll say something really briefly. So we, Pat and I went to the Illinois Association of School Boards, North Cook Division meeting, and the presentation was about A I. And the person was able to really familiarize ourself, our, us, excuse me, with many of the things that really, at this point, A I can do, and how that might relate to schools. And was good at saying, you know, what we need to be careful of, and how this is an opportunity. And I'll just share that. Obviously, we have to always be careful about appropriate use. Really, the importance of teaching A I literacy. It's here. Students are going to use it. It's part of all of our lives now. And then making sure that educators have support in using A I liter, A I in the classroom. And just reminding the opportunities involved in that it can lead to efficiency in the learning process. And was very interesting, showed us ways that A I can really create some personalized learning opportunities that can really help students in terms of supporting them when they need extra help in a particular subject.
Great. It was a very good, I think, presentation. And, and I think we're supposed to get the slides, although I haven't seen them yet. So I'll write Arlana and ask her for them. But once we get them, we'll be happy to share them, because I think you'll enjoy going through them. Any other Board Committee reports?
No, the Discipline Committee was canceled.
Okay.
No, it was a couple weeks ago. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're at the Okay, we're at the student board report.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I have kind of a short report today. But basically, after the solidarity space that we held in February, a few staff members and I plan to meet tomorrow to discuss implementing student suggestions into their high school experience. We're working on increasing promotion on ETHS resources as well, and other events that support student well-being and community connection at ETHS, and that'll all be discussed tomorrow, hopefully. To achieve this, we plan to create short segments on the Tuesday tidbits, reaching the entire school community. And we hope to involve clubs interested in, or interested in, or working on these events to help create these different types of like media content. And then the student union is progressing with their committees, with most groups sending emails and developing Google Forms already. The IEP and 504 Plan Committee, along with the Lunchline Efficiency Group, are awaiting responses now. And then a lot of good work has been done, and I'll continue to provide updates as we receive responses from the leadership team and after our meeting tomorrow. So that's all for me, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Campbell?
Thanks, Ben. I love that we have a Lunchline Efficiency Group.
I love it!
I love that we have a Lunchline Efficiency Group.
It takes kids like twenty minutes to get into the Lunchline.
There's so many choices in there, you know, people can't make up their mind what they want.
No, like getting inside the thing, it's like with the scanning in.
Oh, with the scanning, yeah, yeah.
We're trying to figure out a way to do that, but like, cost effectively.
Thank you. Uh, yes, so, there's, this is student summit season, and we're in the middle of our, that, that season for our students. And it's a very exhilarating time for our students and staff. Just want to highlight a couple of things for the board and the community. In February, we celebrated ten years of our Black Student Summit. So for a decade, this summit has been the space for students to come and connect, connect and embrace Black history, heritage, identity. This milestone year, we honor Black staff who, and students who paved the way for a legacy of growth, learning, and community. You all may remember some board members, M.D. Shelton and some others. M.D. was a student board rep who was the first student keynote speaker we had at the Black Student Summit back in the day. So, and he's doing well, living in California, being an adult, graduating from Morehouse a couple of years ago. We welcome ETHS alum Naquan Jones, class of twenty sixteen, and Kayla Henning, class of twenty twenty, as our keynote speakers for this year, and they just knocked it out of the park.
They did.
I mean, just knocked it out of the park. I was so happy for Naquan and Kayla, who were very nervous to get up there and to keynote, and they did a remarkable job. Also, last month, we held, held our Middle Eastern, North African, Asian Summit. This year's theme was "In the Garden of Life, We Bloom Together." And the summit was filled with powerful discussions, interactive workshops, a fashion show, which was amazing, and multiple celebrations to grow, learn, and uplift one another. Later this week, I believe Thursday, we have our LGBTQIA+ Student Summit. And in April, we will have our Ability Summit and the Latinx Student Summit. Couple of calendar items. There are important dates that I like to bring your attention to. Spring break is just around the corner, exactly, two weeks. So, school will resume Monday, March thirty-first. And finally, WOW for ETHS, the annual fundraiser benefiting the ETHS Foundation, takes place this Friday, March fourteenth. Be sure to head to there, or maybe if we're downstate, head in there, too. So, we will see as I keep checking the score. So, that's my report.
And what is the score?
Still halftime, I haven't gotten an, I haven't gotten an update yet. Oh, yeah? That would have been a technical. So, we've got our fingers crossed, go kids tonight. Thanks, John.
Yes. Definitely. Okay, so, we're at action items. The first item is approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. Can I have a?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Calendar.
Oh, did you call me? Yes.
You're holding it up, you're holding it up.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the next item is approval of international travel for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is approval of days of remembrance of victims for, of the Holocaust. And Leah's gonna read that for us.
Okay. Whereas from nineteen thirty-three to nineteen forty-five, six million Jews and five million clerics, communists, dissidents, Roma, gays, and lesbians, disabled people, Poles, Serbs, and Jehovah Witnesses were murdered in the Holocaust as part of the systematic program of genocide. Whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors are never repeated. Whereas, the ETHS community should continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people, remain eternally vigilant against tyrants and hate speech, and recognize that bigotry provides a breeding ground for tyranny to flourish. Therefore, we, the District Two-O-Two School Board, proclaim that in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in the hope that we will always strive to overcome prejudice and inhumanity through vigilance, education, and resistance, proclaim that March seventeen through March twenty-one, twenty twenty-five be hereby designated as Holocaust Remembrance Days at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Let's take a moment to take all that in. Okay, can we have a motion for acceptance?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you. The next item is approval of resolution authorizing non-renewal of part-time teachers.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Carson?
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is approval of resolution authorizing notice of non-renewal of non-tenured teachers other than the final year probationary teachers.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. The next item is approval of rehire of second, third, and fourth-year teachers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of asbestos abatement removal, Project Twenty Twenty-Five, approval of masonry joint sealants, scaffolding, and steel bed, approval of IHSA twenty-five, twenty-six membership, approval of minutes from February tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular and closed session meeting, and February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting, treasurer's report from December of twenty twenty-four, approval of bills, and personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any old or new business, other than the game? Okay. Any updates?
Twenty-nine, twenty-five.
We're still up?
Still up.
All right. Okay, closing or polling of the board? Anybody? Can I have a motion for?
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned at eight fifty.